Good afternoon, ready to start the review? Good afternoon. We're getting ready to start the review session, the agenda review session. We have ordinance on second reading and ordinance, a resolution to amend the ordinance 012301 on second reading. Ordinance is on first reading and ordinance to amend or supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick. This is related to add a new section, 3.28.045, purchase of manhole cover fees. Number two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, title 10 vehicles and traffic. This is in reference to Livingston Avenue. We have resolutions 1 to 57. Number one, approve agenda amendments. Two, approve payroll. Three, authorize refund for retail sales certificates. Number four, approve award contract with Edmunds Gulf Tech. Number five, authorize professional service agreement with Phoenix Advisors, ALC. Number six, authorize professional service agreement with Samuel Klein and Company. Seven, approve amendment of resolution R122168, and this is with NSIC Municipal System Doing Business as First Bite Corporation. Number eight, authorize professional service agreement. This is with Charlie Gaden for Assistant City Attorney. Number nine, authorized professional service agreement with Hefield Sports Law Group. Number 10, authorized professional service agreement with French and Porella Associates. Eleven, release of side performance guarantee. This is in reference to Cola Chavey Development Associates. Number 12, approve payment for emergency procurement using public works for replacement of sewage grinder. Thirteen, advise and consent to mayor appointments of department heads, various department heads. Number 14, award professional service agreement with two Delaware bragging engineers. Fifteen, award professional service agreement with two big nail planning consultants. Sixteen, award professional services to Mike Manymont, Scott Mann and Paul Mann. Seventeen, approve amendment of resolution 012263. This is in reference to 2023 municipal payroll services. Number 18, approve amendment of resolution R082277. This is the new date, relaxation of the city noise ordinance. Number 18, approve amendment of resolution 012234. New date, approval relaxation of city's noise ordinance. Number 20, approve amendment of resolution R102249. The reason is new date, and this is related to the relaxation of city noise ordinance and road closures. Twenty-one, approve amendment of resolution 032229. The reason is for new dates, approved relaxation of city noise ordinance. Twenty-two, authorized professional service agreement with Hogan Logan Miranda Santucas. This is 2023 special counsel for tax appeals. Twenty-three, authorized professional service agreement with Special Data Logic. Twenty-four, authorized professional service agreement with Difrancesco Payman PC. Twenty-five, authorized professional service agreement with BRV Evaluation and Consulting Services. Twenty-six, authorized professional service agreement with Zero Solution. Number twenty-seven, authorized professional service agreement with ERT Technologies. Twenty-eight, approve water contracts. This is with Establest Asphalt Company and Trap Rock Industries. Number twenty-nine, authorized professional service agreement with Mike Manymont, Scott Mann and Paul Mann. Thirty, authorize award of professional service agreement with Orthof Tybalt. That's going, and this is for special counsel. Thirty-one, approve professional service agreement with Power TMS. Thirty-two, approve amendment of resolution R012245. This is to pay invoice in the amount of $3,426.02. Thirty-three, authorized use of copy machine for the police department. Thirty-four, approve award contract with Gold Type Business Machine Doing Business as GTDM. Thirty-five, authorized professional service agreement with NSIC Municipal System Doing Business as First Bite Corporation. Thirty-six, authorized professional service agreement with Bridge Water Better Marine Hospital. Thirty-seven, authorized professional service agreement with Mac McDonald Group. Thirty-eight, approve award of contract with Robert's Engineering Group, ALC. Thirty-nine, authorize award of professional service agreement with Eurofines and Barn and Testing. Forty, authorize approval of agreement with Canelo Field, Porella Field. Forty-one, authorize extension of contract with Wellness Coaches, USA. Forty-two, approve amendment of resolution 12277. This is to extend the contract for one additional year. Forty-three, amendment of, approve amendment of resolution R12223. The reason is to add an additional amount of $9,642. Forty-four, authorized professional service agreement with Johnson Physician Enterprise, PA. Forty-five, approve an award of contract with Clean Air Company. Forty-six, approve amendment of resolution R012278 to extend the contract for an additional six months. Forty-seven, approve award of contract to Wink Maximum Quality Foods. Forty-eight, approve professional service agreement to Mac McDonald Group Doing Business at Mac McDonald, ALC. Forty-nine, approve amendment of resolution 122272. The reason is to correct the date. Number fifty, authorize authorization to accept grant from the county of Mira Sex for Code Blue Warming Center. The amount is $90,000. Fifty-one, approve resolution to refer the New Brunswick downtown redevelopment plan to the planning board for review and report. Fifty-two, authorized reimbursement to multifamily property owners for trash and recyclables for the year 2022. Fifty-three, approve award of contract with Bright Blue Engineering. Fifty-four, advise and consent to rent control ward, reappointments and appointment. Fifty-five, approve person-to-person transfer to legal license. This is from Choka, ALC, trading as Gandinos In to Goriela Vasquez, trading as Equila House. Fifty-six, approve amendment of resolution R082106. This change order will do all building restoration. And fifty-seven, approve resolution to refer an amendment of the zoning ordinance to the planning board for review and report. Then we will have discussions, either discussion by the council, public comment, and the next council meeting. Reminder, at this time. Madam Chair, can you pull the meeting's order?
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Here.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Here.
Council Vice President Egan?
Here.
Council President Escobar?
Here.
Please be advised that the notice reformers of the Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied in that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate policy board, and posted in the back vest, you know, for city hall, visible to the public, through the windows in the lobby of City Hall in New Brunswick, ALC, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely, the Home News Journal.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment to remember. We just have the marking of 13th date on Monday, just to remember our duty to serve and that we continue to, our least legacy, to continue seeking justice, equality for all. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn for a minute?
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Madam Chair, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Madam President, the correspondence received by the city clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate department for further action.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to have, we're going to start with the ordinance. We have an ordinance on second reading. This is a resolution to amend ordinance 012301 on second reading, which is an ordinance to amend or supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, title 17 zoning, chapter 17.2 definitions and chapter 17.4, related to zoning districts. Before we go into this resolution to public comment on the resolution only, can I have Mr. Dominguez, if you could just give an explanation for this?
Thank you, Council President. So after the planning board meeting last week, we kind of thought through the ordinance a little bit, and we felt that it was important to, given the feedback we got at the planning board meeting, to adjust the definitions to be less ambiguous and clearer. So the city put together a more, I don't want to say accurate, but a better set of definitions for the uses in question, and should the council act favorably, this would essentially be a new first reading and re-referral back to the planning board for a date in the future to be held for a second reading and adoption, should the council act favorably.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to ask for the public comment on the amendment only. We are not here to talk about the ordinance at this time, so if you have any comments on the amendment of the ordinance, please come up to the mic, state your name and address only on the amendment. Have you known?
Move the resolution.
Are you telling Daniel, Mr. Daniel?
Yes, I was, just where I just want to make sure when you said this was at the planning board. Yes, Daniel Morrison says Street Street. Is Mr. Dominguez talking about what just went through at the planning board meeting recently? Or is this something different? I didn't hear the category.
I may. So this was at the planning board, but it wasn't the application before the planning board, has nothing to do with the Sears application, this has to do with the zoning amendment that was on for that same meeting. I don't know if you stuck around for that or not.
Yes, due to where it was two of them, one was involved with trucking, dealing with the trucking.
Yes, that's an amendment to that.
That's the one, Mr. Dominguez. Okay, so like I said, I was just wondering which one it was. I know it was two things that was held, and I will say thank, that thank you, Mr. Dominguez, and the planning board, which I did say, it's about time that, wow, you really looked at what was the side effects, what was going to hurt the other people's businesses, and I thank you for looking into it, because like I said, that's what needs to be more done, plenty more, due to where looking at side effects, due to where you're busy just doing one thing, oh, thinking you're going to help some, something one way, and you hurt another way. Like I said, after the owners and all spoke up, like I said, I thank the planning board and you, Mr. Dominguez, for making your mind up, for making sure it wouldn't hurt the other business owners or owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Anybody else on the amendment? Only just on the amendment. We're not talking about the ordinance at this point.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. My name is Tom Trapper. I'm an attorney from the law firm of Chieso, Shehany and Gio Tomasi. I represent 107 How Lane Realty LLC and Meat Lot Leasing LLC. They are the respective property owners of 107 How Lane and 113 How Lane. I just wanted to come up and express support for the notion that the ordinance would be referred back to the planning board for further consideration and comment regarding the definitions and some other elements of the ordinance, and we would look forward to the opportunity to working with the city's professionals as well as the planning board in this council regarding potential tweaks to the ordinance. But with that, just wanted to express support for the re-referral back to the planning board.
Anybody else?
Here.
Good evening, my name is Franz Kassasman. I am the owner of 107 How Lane Property, and I have a few comments to make. We believe this proposed amendment impacts the industrial zone of New Brunswick negatively. It reduces the potential land value, which impacts the tax base. The value of my property, which has been a trucking facility for over 60 years, is likely to be half of the value under the new ordinance. It's not just my property, but other properties in the I-2 industrial zone as well. This impact on property values directly impacts the tax base of the City of New Brunswick and the property tax values equal higher tax revenues for the city. For example, the property of similar value to ours at 1,007 Jersey Avenue pays $355,429 annually in property taxes. Before redevelopment, the property was paid $88,000, and their properties, but similar to mine in size, as a matter of fact, it's smaller, but the building is larger in size. It, that is, that constitutes a four-time increase in taxes due to redevelopment. In addition to this, ordinance places additional burden on industrial businesses. It includes such provisions as the inclusion of solar panels, renewable energy requirements, which are costly, as well as 24-hour security service. These requirements have not been applied to other developments in New Brunswick, namely, the redevelopment of the 30-acre Seashite, which has no such requirement, no solar panels, no electric charging stations for electric vehicles, but will have significant vehicular traffic, residential car parking, and close to 300 parking spots, as well as daily delivery vehicles, such as Uber pickups, et cetera. There is no 24-hour security requirement placed on that residential site, nor any other industrial sites here in the City of New Brunswick. Lastly, the wind system and solar panel farms are also contained within the ordinance are frivolous in that the land value in this area is too high to support such endeavors. Most importantly, the industrial area is impacted by this ordinance and cannot be redeveloped into affordable housing, or medical centers, or schools, due to New Jersey environmental constraints. We know this is our topic within the community, but it is simply not a legal option due to the environmental issues within the zone that the state of New Jersey is aware and prohibits. This zone is a CEA, Classified Exemption Area, for chlorinated chemicals and vapor intrusion. The industrial area of New Brunswick has long been an area of trucking. It is within minutes of major highways. Trucks are necessary to provide jobs and provide people with the goods they require, groceries, medicines, Amazon delivers, and the like. All these goods are moved by trucks, and the area is well-suited to this, to this and truck terminal and drainage. We would like to request a meeting with the council to further discuss this ordinance, the definition, and the impact on the impact, and on the impact on the property value. Thank you.
This is, this is just on the amendment. At this point, that we are, there will be, it will come back to us, and you have an opportunity at February 2nd, the second meeting in February, to further discuss the ordinance. Once that goes to the planning, yeah, we're planning to have it here.
You can come there, too.
They could go to the planning, absolutely. So at this point, can I have a?
Motion to move the resolution.
You just have to please come up. Just remember that this is not on the resolution, this is just on the amendment only, supposed to refer back.
Hi.
I just have to say.
It's okay. It's okay. I changed. I was scribbling. I gotta put my readings on. Excuse me. It's quick. Oh, good evening, good people of New Brunswick. I'm here in regards to the ordinance of Title 17. This, these changes really don't affect me today, and may not affect me ever. However, I'm here to support one of my neighbors. To let you know, I've presented in front of the CPSC, worked indirectly with the California Energy Commission, the National Electric Code. I've chaired an ANSI committee and currently on an ANSI review committee, and also on an ANSI writing committee. Words and thoughts that have come out of my head are currently laws in states all across our nation. I attended the council meeting in December concerning this matter. I attended the following meeting concerning this matter in January, and with today's revisions, I'm even more distraught than I was before I went into the building. The new definitions for fulfillment center, parcel distribution center, I have a problem with. I asked at the meeting where the requirement for 70% shoulder came from and told it was indirectly to add a cost to discourage people from coming to New Brunswick and building a terminal in New Brunswick. The correct answer to that question would have been, hey, it's here to charge the futuristic electric trucks. In my opinion, that's just bad writing, and all numbers, when you put them into council notes, law, and whatnot, either need to be justified with facts or science. I asked about an alternative, about having a white roof to lessen the heat island effect that could be in New Brunswick, which would also lessen the effect of heating and cooling the building, which would also indirectly save electricity, but received no answer as an acceptable option. I asked about the possibility of using CNG trucks, biodiesel trucks, technology that's not even there, maybe the Tesla guy will come up with something new, who knows? But the way it's written, it's not enforceable, and it's a farce. And when I pushed on that subject, I was told, well, we have eight years to change, and maybe in the future, everything will be electric, and we can change, put a variance in in eight years. But that's the wrong answer. That's not the way you write code. That's not the right, the way you write an ordinance. You leave the ordinance open for revision and for new technology, instead of pigeonholing yourself into poor writing and worrying about changing it eight years from now. I don't know if I'm going to be here in eight years to fix this mess. I don't know if you're going to be there in eight years to fix the mess, but you don't start with a mess. I've seen bad building code be put forth and turn into law, and when it's not checked by people in your position, or people who are smarter than me, it takes years, in years to correct an inaccuracy like this. The problem is, once one town puts bad writing into an ordinance, the other towns will copy figuring the City of New Brunswick is smart, they did research, they did their due diligence, they can back up all their numbers. However, that's not the case with the ordinance in front of me. I went to school right down the street on Langs and F, and would have been told by my teachers to start all over, because my piece of paper would have been bleeding red with all their corrections. If New Brunswick really wants to be the hub city, how can it dissuade people from having a trucking terminal, which is, which was there before, a fulfillment center, which I really don't have a problem with, and a parcel distribution center? And if I was in your position, I'd be ashamed of accepting the, the new ordinance, the way it is written. I heard the following from the people sitting on your side of the desk. Oh, we don't want, you don't want a truck terminal in New Brunswick. You don't want containers stacked to the sky and look like Elizabeth. I can understand that. However, if you don't want a shipping container guard, just write that. If you don't want a drop and pull truck yard, just write that. This is just incorrect. And here's my point, which I learned from some people who are no longer around, most of my mentors. When you write code, laws, ordinance, amendments, and et cetera, write what you mean and mean what you write. You should be short, concise, without room for interpretation. For, for example, the Ten Commandments, they do a good job on that. Okay. Oh, I've got three lines left. In conclusion, what you proposed is not justified, not enforceable, and doesn't rely on proven science. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Like I said before, you will have an opportunity in the public, again, at the planning board, and again, at this council, to talk a little bit more about, to express your concerns in favor or concerns with this ordinance. At this time, I would like to take a motion to move the amendment to the resolution.
So move this.
Ah, to the ordinance, I'm sorry. The resolution to amend.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Now, at this time, I would like to undertake a motion to move this ordinance.
As amended.
As amended to.
Second reading.
To the second reading for the next council meeting, September 5th.
That's not the next one, it's the second meeting.
The second meeting, I was, yeah.
The February 15th meeting at 5:30. Please, thank you.
Second. Go ahead.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. At this time, we have one ordinance, the first one in first reading, is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, title 3, Revenue and Finance, chapter 3.28, scheduled. This is to add a new section, 3.28.045, purchase of manhole cover fees.
Move the ordinance setting down February 1st, 2023, same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. At this time, we have an ordinance to amend or supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, title 10, vehicles and traffic, chapter 10.16, stopping, standing or marking, section 10.16.210, schedule 38, time limit, parking areas, revising avenue.
Move the ordinance setting down February 1st, 2023, same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Before we go into resolutions, I want to open the show for any of my colleagues, council members, if you have any questions on any of the resolutions, or any comments from resolutions 1 to 57.
Most of the resolutions before us tonight are yearly business, including professional service agreements and contracts. I'd like to comment on 13. Each of these appointees has done a tremendous job working with the city and moving it forward, and I believe they will continue to do a good job in a very professional manner. 14 through 16, these companies have been vetted by the planning board, and based on our experience with them, found them to be appropriate for these services moving forward. 18 through 21, I thought it was a very good idea to do the relaxation of the noise ordinance for the whole year, instead of coming back on a monthly basis, considering these are all large projects. 40 is an exciting project with the proposed sculptor of Paul Robeson. And 51 is the last one I want to comment on. That's the referral of the redevelopment plan for downtown to the planning board. The current plan has been in place for about 45 years, over such time creating subareas and inconsistencies with zoning. The new plan utilizes zoning recommendations in the 2022 master plan. It adds, among other recommendations, density and height bonuses for prospective affordable housing clients, as well as reduced parking requirements and sky exposure relaxation. It encourages smart planning, high density and commercial use, plus it is in proximity to transportation downtown, so it creates environmental benefits in relation to what we want to do. The details of this plan will be forthcoming at the planning board. Those are all my comments.
Thank you. Anybody else? Before we go into resolutions? Okay. So at this time, we are preparing to open the meeting for public comment on the resolutions only. You have up to five minutes, and time up. Any members of the public wishes to speak to the council on any of the resolutions, please approach the mic, state your name and address.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. I'm Charlie Cradaville, from New Brunswick, editor of New Brunswick Today, and do want to voice my support for finally getting a statue of Paul Robeson here in New Brunswick. I think he's an honorable man, and it'll be a good thing for future generations to be able to remember him and his contributions, not only to New Brunswick, but to our society. I'm curious about the Code Blue Grant. I believe it's number 50, $90,000. Could somebody just explain how it works? Is it something where the county gives us, the city, the money, and then the city spends it appropriately? Or is it something? Or is it something where the city spends money and then applies for reimbursement after it spent the money?
For the rest of my knowledge, this is a close reimbursement.
Reimbursement, okay. And I'll note that the grant that's on tonight's agenda is for the two thousand twenty-two slash twenty-three season, which obviously already began in November, and Code Blue has been in operation on, on many nights so far. Do we have any idea how much, how many, how much cost the city has already incurred so far that you will be applying for reimbursement for at this time?
Initially, do we have for two thousand twenty-two, up to now, is it possible?
Yeah, for this, this grant.
I don't have the knowledge. I don't think we have that figured with us tonight.
No, we have for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, we have put together a budget and depending on the amount of Code Blue events, we determine what close we're coming to that budget and all the costs associated.
Okay. And is this the second or third grant that the city's gotten of this amount? I recall this first happened in two thousand twenty-one. So is this, this the second ninety thousand? Okay. And just to be clear, there's a requirement in accepting the money that the city will open up the Code Blue warming center any night that the county calls a Code Blue.
So, and the, the night, right now, yes, and right now, we're talking about the ninety thousand hours, you know, accepted, so, yes.
Right, by.
I really think to say other than the ninety thousand hours, we can talk about it in the public comment.
Right, and so by, by accepting it, the city's agreeing to open the shelter anytime the temperature is predicted to be.
According to the legislation.
Thirty-two or lower.
Yes.
And, and the county makes the call, but when the county makes the call, the city's on the hook to do it, right?
That's my understanding.
Okay. So I am concerned because there've been at least three nights so far this season where the, the warming center has not opened. And I know, I, I communicated with you, Council President, I don't know if you were able to get to the bottom of it, but I do have a document I'd like to share with the members of the council.
Yes, at this point, we just stick with the resolution. Anything other than that, we can talk about it in public comment and there will be a follow-up, some of the questions that you might, or might not have. So, right now, we're just giving the resolution and ninety thousand hours to accept that in the county.
Right, and so we've established that that ninety thousand dollar grant comes with a commitment in the resolution. The city of New Brunswick commits to open a warming center when Code Blue is called by the Middlesex County Office of Emergency Management. Friday night, it was thirty-two degrees and the warming center did not open. You can see in the email that I'm sharing with you from the county communications person, quote, "I looked into this and unfortunately, there was a typo in the email address used to notify New Brunswick on Friday regarding the Code Blue. Issue has been raised and has been rectified." So what that tells me is there's a really sloppy system in place for determining when New Brunswick opens the warming center or not. There was no, there's no piece where New Brunswick says, okay, we'll do it, and, and then it gets confirmed by the county. We, we missed a Code Blue because of a typo in, I guess on the county's end, but nobody here was, you know, checking or communicating with the county to see if they called it or not. I, I don't get it, how one email typo, you're violating the grant if you're not, if you're not following your commitment, councilman.
Again, Mr. Cradaville, we would address, um, I would address that again, right now, it's because of the resolution and it's just to accept that grant from the county for ninety thousand hours.
Right, and I hope this city will honor the commitment that it's taking on by accepting the grant. It's a good thing that the county's chipping in. Now it's on the city to follow through and I hope you take my concern seriously. You know, I, I know I reached out to you Friday when I saw that there was no Code Blue in place and unfortunately, actions that could have been taken were not taken. So I'll leave it at that. I do want to also ask about the downtown redevelopment plan. What, what specific sites are going to be affected? Yeah, I'm sorry, you're not, you want to answer the question?
Time is up, Mr. Cradaville.
I just, I got the question in before the end.
Excuse me, excuse me. Treat people that well. We don't need any lawyers in the back. We have the help of those.
We got enough lawyers, I agree.
All right, the other one, we trust the meeting. I already said that you tell yourself, Mr. Cradaville, thank you.
Okay.
You can bring it up in the public.
See you soon.
Promise. Thank you.
Hi, yes, Daniel Moore, Somerset Street. I'm also going to speak on the ninety thousand dollars due to I just seen an article with Code Blue is no longer accepting volunteers to do Code Blue, that you're hiring four workers. Would you please tell me what is the income, any type of income in paying people going to come out of this ninety thousand dollars?
Again, Mr. Daniel, later on, at the public portion, before.
No, that's not public. I, I actually got the ninety thousand dollars.
The ninety thousand dollars, we are certain to run the program.
So can, can you answer my question? Is it paid to the workers that you want to do?
Listen to me for a second, that's what I'm asking.
Well, I'm not asking for that now.
I assure you that I'm going to answer that question. There was, you know, I, I, before the public portion of the meeting, there's only things that I'm going to address regarding Code Blue because of the last meeting that we had.
Well, I say you should address first due to where, so people, due to where, after you address, we don't get a chance to come back up and comment on things.
No, you're going to have a chance. You're going to have a chance. You're going to have a chance because I'm going to make.
So, so another thing, this ninety thousand dollars, please tell me, will this time, will it start getting cleaned in there, the sheets, where, where even though you don't have to have the volunteers, but please tell me, I will say, thank you, God bless that you did go over there and investigate, because I say it has been better, but please tell me, will the proper things from sanitation, getting cleaned and everything be done properly due to where you're getting ninety thousand dollars?
Yes, I can assure you, yes.
Honestly, I trust you due to where you were the only one that looked into it the first time and like I said, I'm just very disappointed, but wow, you had city employees who volunteered over there and didn't mention anything about how nasty it was for Code Blue.
Do, I assure you that.
I do trust you on that. And then the other one that I would like to speak on, that's far as with the, I, I saw something with the contract ending with the nine one one. Please tell me, I hope you did not renew a contract with Rutgers regards to nine one one emergency, thirty-two with communications, where for how long have I been telling you? Wow, nine one one, seven four five, fifty-two hundred needs to go back to New Brunswick Police Headquarters. Wow, is it going to take one of you to see an incident where it takes twenty-five minutes to thirty minutes for a police car or ambulance to come your, your, your way for you to understand? I've proven to you plenty of times, so please tell me you didn't renew a contract with, with Rutgers.
This resolution that you're talking about, that you're referring to is to pay the bill for November and December.
Okay, but.
It has nothing to do with contract, it's just to pay, and we owe that money. That's all we, that's all we do.
So, so please tell me, you're saying. So, so due to where this says up until December two thousand twenty-two, okay, this is point, so, so, also, okay, will you be, still continue paying? Did you renew the contract with Rutgers?
That's what we think. Resolutions, we cannot answer that at this point.
Like I said, sad to say, well, I think about how, how long it's going to take for an emergency for Rutgers Village and like I said, due to where, what? Come on, I lost a neighbor with communication with nine one one and I, seven four five, fifty-two hundred, due to where going the wrong location, due, due to where, come on, too much is happening. I'm not the only one seeing this. Wow, you're on Facebook, you see the articles, ooh, where you have to wave down Mister, where a couple of firefighters that to help people? Come on, due, due to where, what? With all this building that you're doing, one thing, please think of, wow, more people? We're going to need more rescue, rescue ambulance. And like I said, you're doing this, but like I said, wow.
I appreciate you coming, Mr. Daniel, but at this point, we're just talking about paying an invoice.
Well, well, please, now, like I said, I hope you just take it seriously and wow, one of you don't have to really see how long it takes, what? You get involved in something, waiting twenty-five minutes to thirty minutes for ambulance or a police car. Because I'm surely not happy and it's not like I haven't proved and other residents have improved theirself as well.
Anybody else on the resolutions only? Have you none?
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. At this time, before we go into the public comment portion of the meeting, does any of my fellow council members would like to address the public? Go ahead. Councilmember Anderson.
I'd like to give my condolences to the Keith family on the passing of Mr. Ed Keith. Mr. Keith is a New Brunswick person through and through. He sat on a few boards and everything, so we'd like to send our condolences to him, his family and all his friends.
Anybody else on the council? Just doing a comment? Just before we go into the public portion, having the, the members come up, I just, there's a few things that we have to give an update from the last meeting that we had here. At the last meeting, there was a few allegations made against the Code Blue program. I asked the business administrator to investigate some of those allegations. I just want to make clear that it's not the intention of this council to run the day-to-day operations of the program, of the Code Blue program. I think that my intention at least is to ensure that we are compliant, we are working in accordance with the legislation, that we have the safety of the staff and the guests as a priority, and also that we provide a temporary warming, which is, that's why we're supposed to give a warming placed shelter when the temperatures go below thirty-two that are optimal, right? That they have the, that we have what is needed and that they have optimal sanitary conditions. It's not to run the day-to-day operations. So in such, Mr. Drew, can you please give an update, a summary of the investigation, give us a report on the investigation that, based on the allegations made to this council?
Certainly. At the request of the Council President, I'm providing the following information regarding Code Blue, particularly on volunteers, reimbursements and facilities. Regarding volunteers, prior to the pandemic and prior to the city transitioning to the lead organization for Code Blue, just a little information about volunteers. Volunteers need to be eighteen years old, need to be able to get to the site and work a full shift. This is important because the process involved candidates making their interests known by completing an online Google survey sent out and managed by the head of Code Blue. If a volunteer was needed and there was a qualified candidate, then the candidate would be contacted by phone for an interview embedded with a reference check. This was done by the head of Code Blue. From that point forward, the communication was between the head of Code Blue and the volunteer, and the assignment of the volunteers accordingly. Candidates who apply to the Code Blue program to volunteer are not truly volunteers or were not truly volunteers, until they've gone through this process. Unless a candidate is specifically contacted by the head of Code Blue to become a volunteer and participate, they're still just a candidate and not permitted to volunteer. This is for the safety of Code Blue participant staff and the candidate. Prior to the pandemic, the city was simply hosting a space and providing the community minimal administrative support. Its exposure and liability was, was minimal. Now, as lead agency for the program, the city's liability exposure has grown significantly. As much as the city would like the help of volunteers, we've been advised that only city employees are properly insured to administer this program.
Excuse me, excuse me, if you keep this up, or somebody has to step out. So let's try to, excuse me, again, I ask you respectfully to stay quiet and if you're not able to do so, I respectfully ask you to come out of the meeting. Thank you.
I'll, I'll restate that statement. As much as the city would like the help of volunteers, we have been advised that only city employees are properly insured to administer this program. And the city can no longer assume the liability of non-city employee volunteers. Therefore, the city no longer utilizes volunteers for Code Blue. Regarding purchases and reimbursements, as you know, the Code Blue operation runs opposite regular city hours and on weekends. There have been times when the head of Code Blue was informed that the Code Blue site ran out of supplies, like garbage bags and other items. In these off-hours, the best solution was to purchase these items and bring them to the Code Blue site as they were needed. These are items that the Code Blue director could get reimbursed and still has the ability to be reimbursed for. As it relates to facilities and procedures, at the close of each Code Blue, the city's Public Property Division arrives on-site. They work with the Code Blue staff to clean up the space and return it to its regular use. Any replenishment of supplies, vandalism, required repairs are reported to administration for action. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you so much. So like I said, I think that, I hope it's clear, some of the assumptions that were made. As I said in the past, you know, I went, so I witnessed, you know, that some things needed to be taken attention to, they had paid attention to it. I am a hundred percent confident that with the staff, I think it's a good idea that we have staff there now, we don't have to worry about whether we have enough volunteers or we don't have volunteers. I think if the operations of the warming shelter would be much better. And, and I'm confident that all the staff and everybody who's involved in Code Blue and operate Code Blue are doing the best for those who are, are guests doing that. Nonetheless, I will continue to be looking into the, the Code Blue to make sure that we keep operating the way we are supposed to and I hope that, that clears away any misunderstanding. The other question, Mr. Baron, you might have it. On Friday, the situation that Mr. Cradaville alluded to, there was a typo, I guess, so do you have any more information on that, on that Friday, what happened?
Council President, I don't have any additional information.
You mentioned Mr. Jones.
Yes. So, Friday, we did not receive a Code Blue text, a Code Blue email from the county. The temperature didn't dip below the threshold of about five in the morning for us, so we didn't think anything of it because at that point is the next morning. I figured that they made a judgment call at the county, therefore they didn't call it on that Friday. Saturday, I didn't receive an email as well, so I'm like, okay, what's going on? So I called John Ferguson after a text and say, hey, are we calling Code Blue for tonight? He said, yes, we called it for Friday for the next four days. I said, well, I didn't get an email for Friday. He chalked it up to maybe it's in my spam or anything like that. I get a call from the county two days ago saying, hey, Mr. Cradaville's calling, asking why you didn't open for Code Blue. I said, I never got an email, so they checked their logs to see if they had an email. And of course, they had a typo in the email, so it never made it to me. But I called it for Saturday all the way through Monday, so the email for Friday was for four days. Never got the email, but I still called it for Saturday through Monday because that temperature was definitely going to be Code Blue. Friday was still on the cusp, that's the only reason why a red flag wasn't raised.
So anybody else from the, the council ready to make a comment? Have you done? So now the members of the public, you may come and step up to the microphone. You have up to five minutes to make a comment and please state your name and address when you come up, it's only one time only.
One time?
Yes.
Why?
Absolutely, okay, all right. Um, so I don't feel like I have to give my address or my name, that's pretty ridiculous. That's really all BS to houses folks who don't even have an address or undocumented folks who, you know, are worried about retaliation. I'll give you a loop. So, how are we supposed to know where this ninety K is going to and what it's going to be spent on? Last time, folks expressed how Chief Keith Jones decided to close, close Code Blue to volunteers, citing ulterior motives, and for that, what could that be? Better living conditions for people just like you and I? As such, I was not able to volunteer alongside others until this week, when I attended a roaming shelter held in one of the churches. Although I never experienced Code Blue, I am for certain that the city views houses people with contempt. Everyone here had their personal cots, with belongings allowed to be kept during the day. Sheets and whatnot were cleaned and Code Blue, they reeked of piss and had dry blood on them. A woman who cooked dinner expressed in passing that she didn't have a health insurance. The coordinators bought the food for folks with their own money. The cook was still there to serve her neighbors, unlike you city administrators who leech off state benefits while producing no labor and value whatsoever. Also, no food is served at Code Blue. Lights were turned off at ten and folks were allowed to leave in and out for fresh air, private conversations, private time and smoke breaks. Lights are on all night at Code Blue and once you step in that door, you're not allowed if you want to stay the full night. Users were given a biohazard container in the restroom and no one was criticized, let alone asked intensively or policed about possible usage. When one shelter seeker was experiencing a dissociative episode, volunteers worked with them to make them feel safe and comfortable. A few folks came late due to working beforehand. At Code Blue, they would have been turned down and kept out because they did not make it in time. However, irregardless of whether one works or not, all of these people deserve to be treated humanely, and one thing, they need one thing desperately, housing. Yet the city continues to harass its houseless, tearing down tents and crafting Code Blue into a setting that resembles a prison. How is a program that treats people like convicts going to promote this supposed safety that you preach about, whether it be with volunteers or shelter seekers? Not once did I feel unsafe in the church's shelter. Some of my volunteers slept in an outside room with the door unlocked, and they did not feel unsafe either. Is there even any proof of the toilet being vandalized? Why is this considered a fact, but people's living experiences are considered allegations? How are we supposed to believe that another ninety thousand is going to help these folks when no public volunteers are allowed anymore and no public accountability is going to be given? And it was only after volunteers made a fuss about that, about these issues that any sorts of change was implemented. Also, in regards to the Paul Robinson statue that's being proposed, I feel frankly ashamed to have that up, just considering that you guys do not carry his legacy whatsoever. One sec, sorry. Paul Robinson was an active and open communist. He claimed that "One reverently speaks of Marx, Engels, Lenin, and Stalin, the shapers of humanity's richest present and future." He also claimed that "You are the non-patriots, and you are the un-Americans, and you ought to be ashamed of yourselves" when investigated by the Un-Americans Committee in the McCarthy era. And yeah, you simply do not follow his legacy, whether it be putting up a statue or, you know, still to this day, every day on the buses, rockers, I see houses folks begging on the street on the corner of Robinson. You guys do not follow his legacy, and it's a shame that you guys are trying to posture like you do. Thank you.
Greetings, City Council. My name is Robert Bass of Davenport, at Ward Street. I just want to talk to you about the violence in our schools, especially in New Brunswick High School. Because I attend New Brunswick High School. I'm a junior currently. And throughout my high school career, or whatever you want to call it, there's been countless fights, there's been countless erotic behaviors, such as, you know, illegal activity. And, you know, I just have this concern that, you know, our school and our government isn't doing enough to address the violence and, you know, taking care of our students. One thing that the school tried to do is, you know, make this, talk about mental health, but they don't talk it as much as they need to. They just put it on the statement, that's it. They think that's going to help the students, but it's not. They need to directly work with the students to make sure that not only that we are learning, but to make sure that we resolve issues about fighting or violence in general. Because the things I witnessed at New Brunswick High School, you see kids throwing chairs at each other, you see fights every single week. You know, there's blood in the bathroom as well. You see kids vaping. I probably had some vaping myself because I was just minding my own business, and some kids are just vaping. I'm like, shit, well, pardon me, shoot, what am I supposed to, you know, do? So I just want to ask you, do you have, do you have a plan or at least thought about a plan on, you know, addressing and making sure that our schools are a bit safe? Making sure that my school are safe, you know?
What I will tell you is, as you probably will know, I thank you for coming up and expressing your concerns. One of the things that we have in the Board of Education, right? That they have meetings, they have a board that you could express, have you gone to those meetings to express your concerns? Because they are the ones who need to address it, right? And be sure. But nonetheless, we have one of our council members here who is the liaison to the Board of Education, and I'm pretty sure that he will bring back your concerns to that board and make sure that they look into your concerns, okay? But I appreciate you.
All right, thank you very much.
Hi, this is Danielle Moore. Yes, first, I'm going to start off with saying I don't trust that it's going to be for city employees for Code Blue due to where, like I said, you already had city employees volunteering and not reporting how nasty it was that was getting over there. But I will say, I take your honor and trust due to where since you've become president, I do trust that you will keep an eye on that due to where, with that, I will say also since, wow, I'm seeing progress since you're president now. Due to where I would thank Captain Hayer from the fire department. I don't know if it was an order or if it was volunteer for taking the matters of when I was talking about the same owner of 133 Jones Avenue with, over here in Oxford Street, due to where they did come and do the investigation, where, like I said, perfect timing, where when I'm just walking and just see him over there doing an investigation, then next day, investigation with inspectors. Now pray, like I said, the same thing doesn't happen over there, but I thank you due to where you do do a lot of work. And like I say, the fire department should have got a raise instead of New Brunswick Police Department, that's for sure.
Just for the record, I have nothing to do with that. No, no, I don't think you have my time. I'm going to give you your time. I just wanted to tell you that I have nothing to do with that. That was on his own. He's his job to see.
Okay, do you think you're at least pausing the time?
Make sure you give her two minutes back, okay?
That, 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 thank you. Due to where, like I said, I thank you due to where I know you do do a lot of volunteering on your own, not to be asked or told for safety. And like I said, God bless you on that. One thing I will ask you, Mr. Cradville, please, I'm begging you due to where what? Please start announcing back to the public again of what's going on throughout New Brunswick, because I really think these council members and the public really needs to know what's going on. Wow, over six stabbings and slashing over French Street. How many robberies? Wow, still think, let come on, let's think about that school. And one thing I'm going to speak out of my heart tonight, and please, this is nothing about hate, this is about safety. Please tell me, can a person who is illegal or undocumented, get arrested or get tickets in New Brunswick? I'm tired of being forty-six years. I'm tired of, ooh. And for example, Suzanne Tocor Lovren telling me, ooh, no, you're not allowed to put your hands on nobody. See, you fell for it, it was just a joke. I said, ooh, if I'm like a New Brunswick police officer, can I go over and hug him? Ooh, no, you're not allowed to put your hands on no one, Ms. Moore. Wow, please, do you know what it's like to be a victim? I never told the other side with that man, same man, grabbing four women. Did New Brunswick Police Department take him in? No, they didn't. Wow, they didn't tell you due to where, yeah, I had a panic attack. The Lord led me over to my son's daddy's house due to where I was running around the house. Where is this man? Where is this man? Maybe you ought to be a victim of seeing what it's like. You got the nerve to tell me that what? That I can't do that? But please tell me, is New Brunswick Police Department, what are they doing? If you're an illegal or a, please tell me, are you allowed to be arrested, treated equal? Because like I said, you can't say this is a hate due to where I thrown, thrown GoFundMe pages, two thousand twenty-one, for Townsend Street, when you remember due to where gathering all the people with food and clothes? What, I buy my hand warmers? I told him this year I couldn't do it due to where what? I had to put up fifty-four hundred dollars with this apartment due to where I got it by myself, but I couldn't help him this year. This is not about hate. Like I said, I work together, but please, I'm not going to stand here and then by time, wow, if I go through that, please tell me with these drunk men standing over there, still continue grabbing people, what is a child going to go through? If I, I'm not scared to walk through there because honestly, like I said, oh, I'm very dangerous long as the other man. I tell you, every man that put their hands on me is dead. And believe me, did I do it? No, and I marked John Tepinsky, the fourth man where justice wasn't served, with him putting his hands on me, he's the fourth man dead. Did I do it? No, I didn't. But like I said, my point is for them kids, please. What if justice? Please. And like I said, forty-six years as a black resident, please. What is illegal to do? What, putting your hands on your, what, as long as you're black? Ooh, driving with no license? Ooh, illegal? What, long as you're black? Like I said, I already know New Brunswick is a racist police department regardless, but like I said, my point I'm getting to, please, let justice be. Because like I said, what I'm seeing, you will all regret, like I said, when the first child goes through something over there. And please, I hope New Brunswick Police Department stop doing this. I've been seeing too many articles due to where, wow, what? Due to where if they're undocumented or illegal, how what? Yeah, they get arrested and get released? Please, come on. Like I said, I'm not, I'm not no person to judge about color. Like I said, no matter what race, creed, or color, we need each other. And you know, I work with all people, donating food, doing everything. But please, I'm not going to have someone, wow, you tell me that I can't do something, and what, the police are sitting right there? What, people urinating in public on French Street? What, New Brunswick Police Department sitting right there? What, I'm getting plenty of videos coming in from other people of what's going on. Wow, with New Brunswick Police Department, ooh, you gave me a ticket for being in park after hours, and I was only calling an ambulance for someone. But wow, you don't give the other ones ticket? Justice equal, please, that's all I'm asking for. So please, you don't have to answer my question today, but please, as of now, I would like to know, is that why New Brunswick Police Department is not, what? Doing tickets, checking for driver's licenses or whatever, speeding? What, because they don't want to deal with the paperwork work? But what, if somebody is, what, undocumented or illegal? Wow, I've been seeing too many stories. And like I said, due to where, what? Back then, due to where, what? You had, I don't know, the Fed was here, and believe me, I got the story. What, they was here to pick up a hundred and fifty of them? Mayor Cahill gave an order to New Brunswick Police Department, do not, do not respond. Please, justice equal, that's all I'm talking about.
Thank you.
Unless, like I said, pray you don't become a victim, Suzanne Tocor Lovren.
Britmyn Livingston Avenue. I'm a driver at the Department of Public Wastes, so it's kind of hard to squeeze everything for five minutes that goes on. But I'll just keep this short and sweet. The contract that we, that these guys are always bringing up, the city council members, the bargaining agreement is still not finished. They don't have any updates, they don't tell us what's going on, but they still want us to work without a contract. There's nothing but excuses from what I'm hearing from the board, and it's pretty sad. You know, I want to say thank you to all of my supervisors that deserve the money that you pay Tom Valenti and his salary. You need to be paying them because he doesn't know anything about our department. That's Victor Fair, that is Keith Lewis, that is Mr. Felix. I apologize, I don't know his last name. That is Joey Morales, that is Quentin Page. They deserve a raise as well, not just us. Because you know, we work for people that won't even speak to us when we come into the room. You know what I mean? It's really sickening and it's sad, and there's a lot of guys that work for us that can't even afford to live in New Brunswick. And let's talk about how they undercutted the union. They don't tell, they tell us they don't have money in the budget, just like they're doing these people with Code Blue. You don't know what you're doing with their money. You fired all of the volunteers for no apparent reason after they brought up some sort of issues that they were experiencing. Now they can't volunteer there. They do the same thing down in Department of Public Wastes. They've hired over eleven seasonal workers or temporary workers. They didn't have enough money to pay us when we were asking for a reasonable raise to be able to afford to live in the city that we work in, but you had enough money to pay over eleven seasonal or temporary workers.
Those are scabs.
Excuse me.
Doesn't make any sense. They don't have money for us, they don't have any money for our safety to protect us, to make sure that we have the proper safety and equipment to get the job done. They have more than enough money to pay temporary workers. That's a spit in our face. You allow Mr. Thomas Valenti to send police to each and every person's house as a wellness call. We've had people with COVID at the job, and nobody alerted the other workers. So possibly people could have COVID and still come into work, but we didn't get any wellness calls for that. We watched the news, not all the police, but most of the police kill black people. You wouldn't understand if you don't have the color of my skin. But you're sending these people to our house to check on us for not coming to work. Doesn't make any sense. Once again, you hired eleven seasonal workers. Isn't that undercutting the union, the bargaining agreement that you guys keep saying, go talk to your union? You undercutted that so that you'll be able to hire and fire these people whenever you get ready. It doesn't make any sense. Where is the money? You're losing your workers. Every day, I come to work, and they're telling me they're leaving. And I'm wondering what's going to happen to the city of New Brunswick and their garbage. When are we going to have an arbitration? If you had a meeting, we wouldn't have to come down here. We don't get to speak to Thomas Valenti and whoever else he gossips about, how he feels about me, but I'm not a coward like you. I can say how I feel to your face. You can talk about me, a woman behind my back. But what I'm telling you is, is you need to make it a reasonable wage. Everything is going up. These guys want to stay here and work for you guys, but how are they going to afford to live? It's just that simple. It's not like we're asking you to draw your blood, but trust me, I don't want any. It's tempting. You're snakes, and you're sitting across the table hiring temporary workers when you could have just paid these guys that have been doing it for years. When I first started here, we were completely understaffed. You didn't care to hire seasonal workers then to help out. You waited until you felt like we were striking or not coming to work to hire temporary workers? You don't train them, they don't know what they're doing. Now, the truck is made for two people on the back and three people to ride inside the cab. Now you have four or more people. So what happens when they get hurt? Are you going to pay for them to go to the hospital? Are you going to pay for them to do what? They don't get union dues, pension, and things taken out of their check. You're paying them full amounts of money. The guys that work for you for years, they get all of these things taken out of their check. So they're getting paid less than what you pay your temporary workers, but you don't have any money. The same thing you did with Code Blue. Where's their money going? Let me guess, how many more meetings are we going to have to go to before you answer the question? Is somebody going to have to die at Code Blue for you guys to get exposed? Like, I'm not understanding what's going on. They deserve, they deserve better too.
Could you answer her question, please?
No. Excuse me. I'm not going to tell you again. If I hear you again being disrespectful and out of order, I'm going to ask you nicely to step out, and I don't want to do that. Thank you. Yes. Name your address.
My name is Holly, I'm on First Ave. So last week, you guys said that the report would be on how the money is being spent. But then we came here and the report was, oh yeah, also you said volunteers could continue volunteering at the last meeting. But then we came here and the entire report was about how volunteers are not necessary. So I'm just wondering, when can we get that report on how the funds are actually being spent? Since it was.
I want to give you something. It wasn't this week, last week, it was at the last meeting that we had. But that's when I found out, we found out. It was expressed to us that volunteers were not any longer needed. The prior meeting, I thought they were, so I was saying, let's volunteer. You know, we always have been looking for volunteers. So I was not aware that we had hired some staff, so that's, that's what happened. In terms of the money, the money has been spent on, right now, supplies. It's part of it, administrated, and just to run, you know, the shift that we're going to pay the workers that are working there. So that's how the money's being used for Code Blue this time. So I cannot give you the specific amount because I don't have the amount, but I tell you that the ninety thousand dollars and I believe it's over that, it covers that, that part. So, excuse me, excuse me, thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
Your time is up.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, and so if the city does not plan to involve itself in the day-to-day operations of the shelter, as you said, yet it's a city institution, where should we go to demand better conditions on the day-to-day operations? Because the people, we've been listening to them, want longer hours. They want to be allowed food inside. Some even have diabetes and need to be eating. They want to be allowed to go in and out. These don't really have to do with even how, like, the money itself. This is just human decency, human condition. So that's still a strong demand from, coming from all of us and from all the people we've spoken to. And why, what, yeah, what will New Brunswick do? And why are you accepting the bare minimum from a legal standpoint? You do way more than the bare minimum on so many other aspects in the city. So why on this? Is it like, oh, you guys should be okay with it because we did the exact, to the minimum letter of any law? It doesn't really make sense at all. So that's my comment, I would love any response on that.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Jones, if you'd like to.
I'll respond to all of them.
Yes.
But then once he responds, then nobody gets a chance to respond back to him?
Let me stay, let me stay.
That's okay.
So.
Was it like that before?
Excuse me, again. Mr. Jones?
Are you going to be answering now?
Yes, please.
All right, so for the, I've been taking notes on every speaker. So for the in and out portion of your question, allowing folks to go in and out, uh, for years, Code Blue since 2002, um, the trend has always been when people go out, they either A, don't come back, or B, they come back destructive and they start, we got to start the whole process over again, uh, for getting everybody settled. And this is going back for when Code Blue was at Elijah's Promise, uh, and people were sleeping on the floor. Uh, then we also have huge issue with drug deals happening outside and being brought back in. Um, and this has been ODs in bathrooms, ODs on the floor. This is at Elijah's Promise dating back all the way to 2002, uh, et cetera. We've also had in the past where, uh, folks that go in and out cause a lot of issues. Um, we put the time on it, nine o'clock, most of the people that want to get out of the cold, they come in by nine o'clock. We get people that show up to the door, they see how many people are there, they say, oh, was a cop there for me? And they leave, they never come back, or they come back later, then they come back at one o'clock and saying, hey, I never let them in. The food portion, food is permitted by them, by the actual guests themselves. They can bring sandwiches, they can bring their own bags, they're not allowed to eat in the big room. And they're not allowed to eat in the big room at the cop because, you know, things happen, they mess up, they dirty, we got to clean it up, et cetera. The food is allowed in the hallway because we do take into consideration people's medical situations. I have people that have suitcases full of meds. So that's not accurate that food is not allowed in the building, food is not allowed in the big room. We no longer give out food. For years, we've had all these big groups in hospitals and houses of worship dump, uh, trays and trays of food on us, you know, to give to people all throughout the night. Part of the reason was, we only got limited volunteers and no supplies, so the cleanup was short. So the cleanup was short. The other challenge to that was sometimes they brought enough, sometimes they didn't bring enough. The third challenge was hi- uh, health issues. So, uh, dietary restrictions, some people were allergic to it, some people, so it was a liability. So that's why we don't allow food from, uh, partners or different organizations into the building. But the guests are allowed to bring their own food in.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any other comments, please? Uh, we have a few, but we should show you the time, so you have a minute.
Okay, yeah, I think, thanks for the response, but yeah, I don't think it answered, it's, it's still the question about the bare minimum. Like, everything you said is like, if we actually cared, we could still turn these things around to make the conditions humane. It's still like, just doing, like, cutting things back and back and back to just the bare minimum. And I don't really see why that's like acceptable for anyone here. Like, why would we just be doing the minimum letter of the law for this? We do it for, we go above and beyond for other things, so why is it, all the answers are like, we just break it down to the lowest, lowest common code written. It, it really doesn't make sense. And if you're saying the city's not going to be involved in the day-to-day operation, then what do we do to make things better? When we're here, where, and the people are making these demands?
I say this council, Code Blue has the staff that take it all day to day. I say this council, the city, city council. But thank you for your comments, appreciate it. No more questions. So we want Mr. Cradville to leave your chance before we.
Good evening, Council, Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Um, I want to start out talking about police transparency. I know the council's aware that, you know, the police department has a online crime map on its website. I'll read from an August 2021 Tap Into New Brunswick article. Quote, "The police department will also be working with its software company to revise its crime mapping technology." Came up at a meeting, there was a contract, I asked, well, when is it going to be done? This was in 2021. The answer was, we have no idea. Well, the crime map has continued to exist in sort of a half-completed, uh, fashion, but at least some information was posted on a daily basis. To my knowledge, that stopped on December 19th. There have been no updates to the crime map since December 19th, we're now at January 18th, almost a month later. Um, crime map, you know, espouses that it has a seven-day delay. Um, obviously, this is a full month. Through you, Madam Chair, can Deputy Director Miller tell us what the status is of this and why it hasn't been updated?
I would, I would ask that question, you know, and I would have an answer ready for you next week. Anything with the police related, because it's sometimes we have those answers, sometimes we don't, so to be fair to you and to everybody else, I will make sure that we have an answer for you at the next council meeting. I just put, I just wrote it right here.
Great, I see Deputy Director Miller is here, could you ask him to, to share what he knows?
I see him too, that's why I'm telling you that I'm fully taking all the notes and I will make sure that we answer that for you that next.
Well, I'm, I'm hopeful that you will follow through and follow up on that, but I'm also concerned that it appears the police have a different standard for transparency in these meetings, where when questions are asked about human services, Keith's able to get up and give a response in real time, and I appreciate that. Um, Deputy Director Miller is here, he's paid over $200,000 a year to serve the citizens of New Brunswick.
More than code blue.
And, and, and the city council is shielding him from.
Eh, Officer James. If you hear the person in the back again, the same person do a statement, nicely ask them to step out, please, because I'm, I'm already, I've already told them three times, and I don't want to do that. But if you're being, yes, but I have the right to take somebody else who is not allowing us to conduct a quarter in the public domain. So I ask that, why are you here? But we need to abide by our rules also, thank you.
Thank you, I'll take the extra two minutes. Um, in, in all seriousness, this is a, this is a different standard here. Deputy Director's here, I don't see, I, I mean, this is an issue of transparency, and the, the map's not being updated for a month, now you're telling me I can get an answer in two weeks? But he's right here, so.
What I will say is that, eh, I don't think that's an issue with transparency, I think this is a, eh, is to be fair to you because you need an answer, to be fair to the police department, we need those answers we don't have. So it has to be standardized, it has to take time to make sure that we give the answer that you deserve, right? So sometimes those answers, they don't have it. So is it better to say, no, I don't know, or eh, I'll check? So that's why I'd rather have it, eh, let me check on it, and I will have an answer. If I have it before two weeks, I know how to let you.
You do, you do, I appreciate that.
If I don't have it, you know, I assure you that in two weeks you will have your answer. I will try to get you the answer that you're looking for, okay? And I will find out what's going on with the crime map to give you an update and with the company, so I just jot it down.
Great, and what, while you're at it, can you please ask, who wrote the statement on the city website that smeared the murder victim Azim Seiright?
You already asked that question and I think you have the answer, but.
And who, who was it that wrote it?
I don't know, they give you an answer.
Right, because there was not a clear answer given. So now that you're the president, I'm asking you to ask the police department, who was responsible for that sick and disgusting statement that was posted to our city's website? I also want to read from the same Tap Into article that I started reading from, uh, with respect to shootings. Uh, so it says, "New Brunswick is planning some changes in its efforts to keep residents safe, as well as students returning this fall, Rutgers University and the Business Committee. For instance, city officials will notify the public of shootings in public places, such as streets and parks, through its social media platforms. The intent is to let the public have the benefit of that information." This article was so beloved by the city of New Brunswick that you published it in coordination with Tap Into. It was co-published on the city of New Brunswick website. Um, I'm going to share with you a document. So this is, uh, information I got from the police about a shooting in Joyce Kilmer Park, September 12th. And you can see that it's documented, it was investigated, an arrest was made, but the city did not share any information with the public until I made a request via email. I received some information, but the city did not do a social media post, as you've done for other prior shootings. Also, I'll raise that, uh, on, uh, a subsequent date, there was a shooting. Thank you, and yeah, this is the other one I wanted to share with you, 11/6, just two days before the election.
Oh.
Sorry, uh, at Henry and Roosevelt. There was a shooting, and you can see that it was not solved, or at least there's no information about anyone arrested as of 11:30. And some, in this case, somebody was shot. In the first case, I told you about somebody, an innocent person had a bullet shatter their window of their home, but no people were hit. But in this one, someone, uh, brandished a firearm, firearm went off, uh, victim sustained an injury to his hand. That's a shooting, somebody was shot with a bullet. And on 11/6, uh, the police investigated it, but nobody thought to share this information with the city residents, as had been promised in that Tap Into article that was shared on the city website. So I'd like to find out why they're not following the promises that they made, and I'll look forward to improvements in transparency across the board this year, thank you.
Anybody else before we close out the meeting?
Yes, I got all dressed up, I got to speak.
Let her speak first, the lady, and then you go. Is that okay?
That's fine by me.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Lynn Lstork, I live in Joyce Kilmer, Delaware. Um, yeah, just to echo the concerns about, um, um, public safety, I feel like if the problem isn't acknowledged, we're not going to be able to do anything about it. And I, I know for myself, I mostly get, what I mostly get are the, um, Amber Alerts, or, you know, missing person, a missing child especially, um, which is good, which is fine, but the odds of me being able to do anything about that in the middle of the night, when the child is probably not going to knock on my door. But if I knew that a crime had happened in the area, you know, I would double check that I had locked the doors before I went up. You know, you would take normal precautions. Um, you know, I would not assume if somebody, that is, somebody I know, if they knock on the door, I would just be more careful. That would be helpful to me, to know, I wouldn't go out for a walk. I often go out at night for walks in my neighborhood, and I feel fine doing that, but, you know, I'd appreciate a heads up if something had just jumped off in the vicinity, maybe I might not do that tonight. You know, so, um, that would be very helpful, and I think it's part of, like, kind of denying a problem and then not dealing with it. Also, as related to the young man who so eloquently spoke about the situation at the high school, I have expressed my concern several times to the Board of Education that they're putting out, you know, on an average of over 100 kids every month out of school. Doesn't say for how many days, I know suspensions can, can vary from one day to, they can be out for two weeks if it's not their first offense. And, um, that's not even counting the in-school suspensions, but they gave me a whole list of things that, that must be out-of-school suspensions, including drug use, alcohol use, um, fighting, violence, you know, weapons, anything serious like that. It's out-of-school suspension. But my question to them has been, and I really haven't gotten a, a straight answer on this, they claim that they do intervention, but the kid isn't there, so what kind of intervention are they doing? The kid is out in the community. Um, so this isn't, this isn't helping the young person, and it's not helping our community. Uh, they really need to, need to look at this and try and intervene while these young people are still reachable and not just say, well, you know, your behavior is incisive, well, you can't be here. Go run around the streets for a few days and then you can come back. That just makes no sense to me, I think that's a travesty, I think we really need to look at a more comprehensive plan and, um, as well as starting to look at more of the, um, community policing options and using mental health professionals. Um, I had read in the paper that Rutgers was doing a big initiative on this, and so I kind of assumed that, you know, Rutgers being right here, there would be some, you know, cooperation there, uh, with that. But I haven't heard that there is, I'm not sure we would know if there were. Um, but a couple other things I wanted to touch on real quick, I think it's a crying shame that our DPW workers are still without a contract. As hard as they work and as loyal as they were through the whole pandemic, with no bonus, thank you very much, as other people got, you know, they talk about the front lines, being sent to the hospital to pick up hospital waste when the hospital, waste people didn't show up, at a time when, what, what, we didn't really even know about this yet, we didn't know, you know, how is it spread, how is it? They were out there, you can't get any more frontline than that, you know? That's, I mean, you know, next to treating the actual patients, that's as frontline as it gets. And, um, I feel like, um, you know, they're not properly appreciated, compensated, respected. And certainly this whole business of bringing in temporary workers, um, I'm sure we'll need just as many people in the summer as we need in the winter. Why would, why would we be hiring temporary workers only for the winter? Uh, or only for now, that does seem just like a, um, yeah, well, Brittany said it, it's, it's like undercutting, undercutting the union and undercutting our own workforce. It was, and, and, and as far as like being able to live here, yes, they need a living wage, but also from the other end, New Brunswick needs to have some affordable housing this season. You know, it kind of goes from, there's no middle ground. And, uh, just real quick, the Department of Environmental Protection has decided that it will go in with that, um, um, environment, the plant, another power plant in Middlesex County, it would be so effective if you guys would sign on to the, um, the environmental commission's recommendation and come out against it, I think that would be really, really a powerful thing to do, thank you.
I apologize, you were going to talk as a private citizen, I'm sorry, go ahead. I thought that you were talking as a.
Yes, surprise.
Hi, good evening, um, my name is Yoshi. Um, and, um, I want to acknowledge that this past Monday was Martin Luther King Day. Um, I know nowadays he's much celebrated for his vision that there can be equality and, but also that there can be justice and, uh, something that's kind of been whitewashed out of our popular understanding of Martin Luther King was, he was also against the, uh, uh, war against Vietnam. This was like, um, a continuation of, uh, trying to, uh, help hold on to this like colonial, um, uh, uh, possession of France. But then once France left, then the United States just continued there. And for that, um, unpopular stance, he was like much hated during his time. So, uh, the reason why I bring that up is, um, uh, I saw that there was a amendment to a resolution, and the current resolution is, oh, 1, 2, 3, uh, 5, 2, I believe, for, is to ease the noise ordinance, um, to work on the Rutgers Tech Innovation Hub, which is, to be very honest, an atrocity, because this tech innovation hub is a collaboration between Rutgers University and Tel Aviv University. And, uh, Tel Aviv University has been well documented to be involved in the research of weapons, uh, which has been used against Palestinians under occupation in, uh, the West Bank and Gaza. And by the way, Gaza is still under a, uh, inhumane siege, uh, 15 years and, and counting. And also, um, Tel Aviv University is famous, or rather infamous, for its development of the military doctrine, new, as the Dahyeh doctrine, which advocates for the targeting of civilian infrastructures. And we saw this again and again happen in the winter of 2008, 2000, in 2012, in 2014, and the latest assault was, I believe, in, uh, 2021 or tw- yeah, 2021. Um, furthermore, um, uh, Tel Aviv University, um, currently holds the body of Ahmed Erecot, who was killed at a checkpoint in the West Bank. And, uh, just to kind of bring it home here, he is actually the cousin of Rutgers University African-American professor, uh, African-American, uh, program professor Nora Erecot. And this body is held in its, uh, Tel Aviv University mortuary, along with scores of other Palestinian bodies. Um, furthermore, um, recently Amnesty International, Human Rights Watch, and, uh, Israeli, uh, human rights organization Beit Selim, all reached the same conclusion that Israel isn't apartheid state.
Apartheid.
One of the, one of the things that Martin Luther King is often invoked as saying is, an injustice anywhere. is, "An injustice anywhere is a threat to justice anywhere." It is really reprehensible that people are going to, like, lose their peace of mind. They're gonna be doing work at night here. So people are going to, you know, be hearing for the greater course of one year, them doing utility work on a place that is most likely going to be developing instruments of war. And I would hope that we learn the lessons in our history that we should not be continuing this. And I give back my time. Thank you.
Cardinals, we are the supporters of New Brunswick today. I could express a same concern as other members have, but I was on like a broker record since I've been complaining about the same things since I started coming to these meetings. I just wanted to basically ask regarding a recent citation I received at 322 CDM Street. It states that there is littering around the property. One of the citations I received mentioned there was trash around it. And I live right next to Thousand Street, which is the host to all the homeless people. I know public safety and homelessness has been the top issue at this meeting for many times, and we've discussed it throughout so many different ways. My main concern tonight is, why should I pay for a ticket that we're cleaning on a daily basis in front of my home? And yet, homeless people go by there all the time, and inspection comes by and, you know, just likes putting a ticket on it, and we're left to pay for it. You know, I can't do anything. It's in a commercial area where people are buying chips, throwing soda cans next to schools where people are coming, their bus stops are there. We have NJ Transit running by there. We have buses stopping by there. I can't keep paying these tickets all along, you know. Trash gets blown by the air, people littering. I provide footage, just like I provide footage to the police all the time about, you know, incidents that occur on that street. But I can't be providing footage every time I get a ticket of who threw that same little piece of trash that makes the whole collection there. So is there a way for me not to pay these tickets? You know, because it's easy to give tickets out to landlords and renters themselves. We can only clean up so much a day before it gets collected or before the inspector comes around.
I don't tell you not to pay the tickets. That's my limitation. But I would ask Mr. Jones, now we have somebody from the inspection house who talked to Mr. Ramirez regarding that.
Who's the address? 322 CDM.
322 CDM.
Yes, like I mentioned, you have Thousand Street, right under there. It's like the new apartment, aside from where the school's getting built. You know, I can't do anything to help their situation. And those who are trying to are being limited on how they can do it. I myself, you know, can only do so much to help them, but I can, you know, be cleaning up there 24/7. So it's, you know, puts me in a tough spot where if I were to save footage of everybody who dumps trash or the wind blowing into there, it would be a whole collection.
We'll follow.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Owen, and I came to hear the Code Blue report. You'll probably remember me reporting on conditions in the past. And I was one of the volunteers also kicked out of the shelter for reporting and reporting on the conditions. From what I understand from the report, it sounds like I may have been in violation of the volunteering program. However, I did submit notification to the department that I'd be attending on the three nights that I did. It was also warmly received by the staff who appreciated my help cleaning and getting people settled. So I had no idea I was in violation. I also am not a resident of New Brunswick. However, it did not make that clear that that would be against any violation to volunteer in New Brunswick. So I've asked for clarification on that. In 20, Oprah request shows that in 2018-2019 Code Blue season, the expense of the program was $6,000, and it was only paid to one city employee named Keith Jones. How does the city intend to use the additional, up to $80,000 funds, to improve the program? Or how has it improved the program over that $6,000?
I think I need to, you want to give an explanation? Because at that time, the program was run differently?
It was, it was.
So you could just give a little explanation into that. Is it okay with you now, or do you want, by the way, for us to...
Well, that's a good point.
It will take your time, but I could give you a few, you know, minutes after. So you... So let's finish, so he could give you that.
Okay, I will keep going, and then, okay. The other point I wanted to make is that on January 10, a Tap Into article was referenced. And the city official responsible for Code Blue services claimed that he paid for supplies out of his own pocket and that he cleans the facilities himself. I'm just gonna read the post. "My Code Blue critics will never tell you that I personally pay for all of the supplies, including toilet paper, garbage bags, towels, soaps, mops, brooms, etc. They will never tell you that I personally pay employees out of my pocket. No write-offs, no reimbursements. They'll never tell you that I've cleaned everything from urine, vomit, blood, miscarriage, discharge, etc., off walls, floors, doors, windows, etc." So my question is, is this true? Can the city verify that this employee paid for these expenses out of his own pocket and did this cleaning himself? Or was he reimbursed by the grant in order to do these activities?
Any other questions before we give you the answers?
I'm just, yeah, that's, those are my questions.
Okay, so you time, you know that, that's all said. Thank you so much. Mr. Jones?
Sure, starting from the top. The Code Blue program prior to the pandemic was a joint program supported by a lot of community organizations. And you referenced Mr. Jones' participation. You know, the city got involved more and more as those, as organizations couldn't take on that burden. And Mr. Jones was very involved at that time. As we went into the pandemic, there were lockdown rules. A lot of the organizations that were there to help before were no longer able to help. A lot of them aren't, are no longer in existence post-pandemic. The city has gone from just offering a location and some administrative support to now the lead agency that handles the location, the administration, the staffing, etc. So there's been a transition over time in our role. And each year, as Code Blue progressed, and there were fewer other members of the community who could help, we took on more of the burden. It wasn't, it wasn't New Brunswick's intention prior to the pandemic to be the lead agency. You know, there was, there was some questions earlier. I have an email in front of me regarding, are we fulfilling our grant obligations? Well, the grantor in Middlesex County, in Mr. Cradaville's email, he seemed concerned, wrote, "When Code Blue was called by the county, New Brunswick has opening warming centers." So I think it's important Mr. Cradaville realized that, you know, the grantor feels that we're meeting our obligations. As it relates to his personal expenses, it's allowed for in the grant. It's a reimbursement grant. When Mr. Jones puts in for his reimbursement, it'll be qualified through a regular reimbursement processes, if he so chooses to do so. And if he chooses not to do so, then he won't be reimbursed. Now, if Mr. Jones, prior to the pandemic, as a person who was a concerned citizen, as a member of the community, was involved in Code Blue, and he was taking money out of his pocket and time away from his family to do these things, that was his prerogative. So I hope that that answers the question.
Thank you. Remember the time he saw? I'll ask you specifically.
But Keith Jones will not be paying for the program out of pocket anymore. That's what I understand. Or has no reason to.
This has to be, the post, like I said, like Mr. Jones just commented. It was also Mr. Jones, if you wanted to do that as a private citizen to do that, or if you want to be reimbursed, that we need to do this though.
Hello, council members and Mr. Jones. My name is Mackenzie. I live in Highland Park. I am speaking today to talk about justice. I was a pastor for a brief time, and that's what I want to talk about today. I want to encourage us to imagine a bigger change while holding the Code Blue warning center that has been changed after the reporting to the positive changes. And since volunteer has been banned, this is difficult to do since there's no public accountability. City governments work on public accountability. When the city isn't working to an adequate extent, we have to go the full distance into questions of justice, in which we have to question everything. You have to trust what you see from the voices in the houseless community here. In our observations of the needs of the houseless community not being met, we must think of additional solutions to create practical and sustainable ways of life for everyone, including those paying out of pocket for the expenses, including those who are at the receiving end of that money. This is a basic human right. And housing for those experiencing homelessness is a basic human right. And I think this is what we are coming around to again and again today, is that there's a larger problem that hand. We have to welcome and care for all who are in need, especially those who have most need and help meet these needs as meeting a basic human right with all the financial resources the city has. But if those resources are protected by other interests of the city, the needs of the houseless community will continue to be pushed under the rug or into one Code Blue center. The shameful and inhuman policing at our national borders, not to mention basically every city in America where people are neglected in pursuit of profit is a testament to this fact on a large scale. How can we refuse to see? She's naming articles. Other people are naming injustices. Do we see them ourselves? Do we confer? How can we refuse to see and neglect and abuse our fellow human beings living their lives out on the street in temporary shelters? Our society's challenge is to build evidence of our shared ability to work together, to care for our neighbors, with a preference for those who need more resources. This is justice. To work for the city is hard when I've been banned from volunteering for reasons I still don't understand. I followed the protocol. I filled out the Google form. I wasn't aware that I was waiting for a response. And to work with the leaders in power is what I've been told to do my whole life. But who really has the power to make change? We all do. But those in power, you and you, Mr. Jones, you have a responsibility as public servants who listen to the will of the people. The will of many here is to see sustained change in how the houseless community is treated in New Brunswick. The changes I advocate for in regard to the betterment of the Code Blue Warning Center and its continuation are as follows. As was mentioned before, could departure hours at the center be changed to a later hour? Or even be open all day for those who might work at night? Yeah, it might be restructuring the program or creating a bigger program. Could it provide more safety from cold on cold days and in the summer from heat? Could a washer and dryer be added for people to wash their clothes? As we talked about, could a meal be served? Can't we imagine more ways that needs can be met in a sustainable way? What's happened to our collective imagination? We're scared. The city needs to be transparent with the public about how funding is being used to improve life for those who have less resources. And specifically, transparency about this 90K. With that funding, what grants can be given to churches, mosques, synagogues, community centers, senior centers, and many other places to create programs that offer transitional housing? And to clarify, why isn't it happening already? Our society has a sickness. It is unwell because we are not all well. Not all given equal access to resources. Power in material means is held by few and withheld from many. I have just a couple more sentences. It feels that most of our powerful leaders don't care for the most vulnerable in our society in ways that lead us forward toward a just society. Why is that?
Make it for your comments.
...to say, so I'd like to think I'd have some sort of authority to speak on these issues relative to a lot of the council members here and a lot of the people who, who claim to represent New Brunswick and Rutgers University as well. I'd like to address a comment that someone here has previously made. I don't mean to come across as passive aggressive. I've just forgotten your name, so I'm sorry, but...
I need to direct you with comments to me, please. Thank you.
Sorry. No, 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 it's fine. But, yeah, as I was going to say, the, the comments about, about the tickets. I'm, I'm sorry to hear about that, and I completely understand the grievances. Like, the, the ticket, that is unacceptable. But all the litter, blaming that on homeless people and the people around New Brunswick, but these are your fellow residents. The, the whole point of us being here, we're, we're supposed to, to be here together as a community. And, and the moment that you forget that, you, you allow the people in power to, you know, to win and to continue getting away with these things. I mean, the whole point of us being here is, is to show, you know, that we actually care and that we can, you know, actually make a change. We can make a difference in our community. So it's quite counterproductive to, to pin it on, on the houses, to pin it on the, the less fortunate, you know. And, and we're here today because, you know, they can't even advocate for this stuff. I think someone else already mentioned this, but you can't even speak without an address. I, I'd also just like to comment, I understand, right? You know, this is a meeting. There are formal rules. I do understand to an extent. Well, I don't understand, as a student, as someone who's learning, as, as someone, you know, who's studying all these things around me, right? If, if you're going to learn, why can't we question anything, really? Why can't I question the fact that, say, for example, you, the council members, are on a higher platform than the rest of us here tonight? Is, is it supposed to be symbolic? Is it supposed to be indicative of your condescending attitude towards all of us at these past meetings? What, what is it supposed to mean? And, you know, this is a public forum, right? This is a dialogue. But what kind of dialogue is this? Where I have to wait in a line, then I have to come up here, I have to speak. And, and for what? And, and you don't even have, aren't even obligated to respond to any of, of what I say? What, what kind of respect is that? And, you know, and, and being brought up in an immigrant household, because my, my parents are immigrants. I'm taught, oh, you have to be respectful. You, you have to give a certain, a proper appearance, or otherwise you'll be profiled, otherwise you won't be taken seriously. I mean, it's for this fact today, right? That I, I wear glasses. I wear watch, even though I don't necessarily need to wear these things, just for people to take me seriously. And, and, and for what? For, for me not to be taken seriously anyway? For other people around me not to be taken seriously? I mean, if, if other people aren't taken seriously, then, then what's the point in me even trying, right? What's the point in me, in me being here, really? But my questions aside, and if there's anything that I would like the council members to take away from my statement here tonight, just one thing. Why are you investing almost $20 million in the police and only $90,000 in Code Blue and other related services to supposedly help the houses? Where are your priorities at? I, I understand that this point has probably been exaggerated many, many times over at, at previous councilman meetings. But even then, why can't we get an answer? What are you trying to hide? And why can't you actually pay the workers of the city? Why can't you pay the sanitation workers here today who, after a long shift, are, are, still make the time to come here and to make themselves heard, only for the council to stand here on, on, on their high, whatever the expression is, their, their, their high chair or whatever. Forgive me, my, I, I forget what it is in English.
Horse.
Thank you. High horse, yes. Just why? And, and obviously, I'm not going to get an answer. But if, if anyone is, is going to listen to me, it is going to be the people behind me. Because the people behind me understand where I'm coming from. You don't. You never have, and you never will. I give up my time. Thank you.
Just Mr. Jones.
All right, Keith Jones. I'll try to answer quick. Keith Jones, city of New Brunswick, lifelong resident, 41 years. Born and raised here, with the school here, with the church here, play sports here. I am New Brunswick. So I try to answer the questions as best as I can. So the, the matter of, so what I, I'll start by saying that there's a lot of misinformation being floated around. I've heard several things that are just, you know, things a little off. For instance, rotating shelter versus Code Blue. Two totally different worlds. A rotating shelter is 10 to 15 guys taken off a coordinated assessment list that are moved to house of worship after house of worship after house of worship. Each house of worship housed them weekly. Then they're moved, transported to another house of worship. These are the same 10 people. This is not a new group of people. This is not somebody from New York or Edison. This is the same. This is the same group of ten people that are being transported to these churches. Uh, so the rules are one hundred percent different. That's why they're allowed in, that's why they're allowed to go out, that's why they're allowed to do smoke breaks. Uh, and a bunch of different things that I, that I won't go into. But I will also add that, um, the rotating shelter, this is their first year back in every bit of five years. Uh, so without the rotating shelter being in place, the only thing in emergency, uh, was Code Blue. And the rotating shelter is limited in the sense that it only runs from December to late March. Uh, Code Blue is whenever the temperature hits thirty-two and below. So, uh, as we talked about last year, we had record nights, uh, while the rotating shelter was not in existence. Uh, churches and houses of worship not, uh, having transitioned housing. We've been knocking on the door for years. This has been one of my biggest concerns, that we don't have our houses of worship stepping up to the plate and being the shepherds of the flock as they say they are. Uh, a young lady stood up here, uh, said she was a member of the cloth. Uh, we talked about house of Highland Park, she works for Seth Capedale. They have limited Code Blue program, there's no pressure being put there. We are one of four Code Blue programs in the county. We are the only Code Blue program that actually promotes our Code Blue publicly. We are the only Code Blue that has no restrictions on who comes to the program. So when we're talking about us doing the bare minimum, we actually do the most as it relates to Code Blue. Uh, Plainsboro doesn't have a Code Blue site, Dunellen doesn't have a Code Blue site. So for all of the, uh, focus on the City of New Brunswick, I can give you twenty-two other municipalities that you can talk to about the work about Code Blue. And I would gladly go with you to help, uh, we can figure it out. Why do we have so many homeless people in New Brunswick? We have so many homeless people in New Brunswick because we have all the resources in New Brunswick. Where the county seat, social services is here, reentry is here. Uh, Coming Home Middlesex County is here, workforce development is here, Rutgers is here, two major hospitals are here, Dina's Dwelling is here, Elijah's Promise is here. We have twenty-nine food pantries and soup kitchens here. That's why the homeless population is here, and they get dropped off here every day. And we've been seeing it for years, this is before I even started. So that's why they're here. If you, you don't, if you're homeless and you don't have a phone, you're gonna stay where you, you can get to your case manager. You're gonna stay where you can get food. You're gonna stay where you can get clothing, you're gonna stay where you can get a shower, you're gonna stay where you can get donations. We put people, we got people turned down housing in Saraville and South River because they can't get back and forth to New Brunswick to eat. So they would much rather stay homeless in South River instead of their two-bedroom apartment in Saraville because they can't eat. Then, there's nothing out there they can't transport, get themselves transported. All right, in terms of food, I answered those questions, people are allowed to bring food, they're just not allowed to eat in a big room. And this is for all the dietary, medical, uh, concerns. Longer hours, longer hours, in the past, we have had longer hours. Uh, but that was when the City of New Brunswick was only paying me. Um, and I was the only city employee, that's why I was six thousand dollars. And it was also, Mr. George didn't mention, but it was also at a lower temperature, it was at twenty degrees. So we had far fewer Code Blue nights than we do now. We're at thirty-two degrees, which is, uh, last year, like I said, we, we went from thirty-six nights in a year. We're now averaging almost eighty nights, eighty-plus nights a year. Uh, so when you ask about the transparency of the money, salaries alone puts us at a hundred and ten thousand dollars for a hun, estimated a hundred nights for Code Blue. So that's my salary and that's also considering five employees and plus maintenance staff and other, uh, miscellaneous things. So for full transparency, there's also a portal that we have to upload our funding to through the county. So if you want to see what we're spending the money on, you can go to the county's portal and see that. There was a mention of us getting rid of paid volunteers to hire people. There's never been a paid volunteer, ever, in this, in Code Blue programming. Prior to us running Code Blue, Keith Jones was the only one being paid. And the only reason why Keith Jones was being paid because Keith Jones wouldn't take comp time. Because Keith Jones doesn't take a day off. So they said, look, well, you have to be paid to do this work because you're still coming to work after Code Blue. Elijah's Promise, who was our partner, was providing two Code Blue captains, actually four, and they were paying them to run Code Blue. So that was the portion, that's the breakdown, and that's why it goes from six thousand dollars. The matter of thirty-two thousand dollars being, uh, denied, or, that's me. I denied the thirty-two thousand dollars for the year because it wasn't enough money. And I denied thirty-two to get ninety, uh, and that was well documented in some papers. So that was the reason why we're able to do the things we are now. That's why we're able to hire more people now. Matter of volunteers, the matter of volunteers, there is, no volunteer has ever been banned. That word is just the wrong word, except Charlie, Charlie's been banned. So, uh, but, but for a different reason, but for a different reason. Charlie's banned because he's media, he knows that, we had this conversation a long time ago. Uh, so no press is allowed in Code Blue, so for privacy reasons. Oh, we have not had a volunteer be banned, ever. The two, uh, young lady and the young man, they were never asked to leave by me. And they know that, they have a recording of me telling them that they don't have to leave. I just asked them to confirm with me, I just asked, I asked them to, I, I let you talk. No, eight times out of, yeah, let me speak.
Wait a minute. You're not talking, I said, are you talking, you know, just a response? I just want to make sure that it's not a public comment that you made here, because if I made us pass already, so you just made a, as a director of the city, which you mentioned it. Exactly, which you mentioned it when you first started talking, just to clarify that, so finish your statement, say it again.
Yes, so they were only asked to leave after they were discovered recording and taking pictures of the sign machines. And I will add, the members of the cloth also lied their way into the building. So therefore, there was an infraction from, from jump. If they would have came through me, they would have been allowed in. And even after knowing all that, I still did not ask them to leave, right? So, so that's that part. In terms of volunteers, we've had very, very, very. We've had very limited, we've had a total of twelve volunteers in the past four years. I repeat, we've had a number of twelve volunteers in the past four years. And that's me sending out a Code Blue, uh, alert for almost two hundred nights. So twelve volunteers and two hundred-plus nights. And that's not because we banned anybody, that's because nobody would step up and volunteer. So now when we do away with the program, now there's a issue that we are somehow banning volun, we didn't ban volunteers. It's actually safer for people not to be in there in that capacity because Code Blue has taken on a different field in terms of the mental illness, in terms of the addiction issues, in terms of the anger. It's a liability issue. We don't want anybody to get hurt, we don't want, uh, people to hurt anybody else and we don't want people to be put in bad positions. That's the simplest way of putting it. It could be turned into whatever it needs to be turned into, but that's the honest, that's the reality of it. So if we had a hundred volunteers beating down our door every day, that's different. But we don't have those numbers and we never had those numbers. I'll end by saying that I am thankful that we got this type of response to Code Blue and this type of response to the issue of homelessness. I personally, the City of New Brunswick, uh, social service, uh, the mayor's office, we've been doing this work for far than I can remember as a volunteer. And if we look through all of the rhetoric and all of the notes, if you look down deep, the City of New Brunswick has and always will be at the forefront of this. And that's why we have the population of homeless we got. I'm not only speaking for me, Keith Jones, who's been named more than, more times than needed. I'm a New Brunswick resident, I'm also a city employee, operating a city initiative. So this is public record, I'm also speaking for this city initiative that we all in this room represent. So at the end of the day, if you want to have a conversation about Code Blue, because I, that's one thing I'll add, I've, of all this, I've not had one conversation with anybody. Anybody, anybody. So for all of this fire, nobody has reached out to me. I make myself, my personal cellphone is public on every email, I only have a city phone. But yet, I still have not received any sort of communication from anybody. So if you want to have a conversation about this, you want to figure out how we truly work together to end homelessness, not only in New Brunswick, because this is not a New Brunswick issue, this is a global issue and it's only gonna get worse. So if we want to throw stones at each other, we can do that all day. But if we want to fix the issue, I am all ears and I'm willing to sit down with any and everybody to do that. It's public knowledge, I'm here on medical leave. I had a stroke on the Sunday prior to Christmas. My running with the Owens and the other person was a week after my stroke. Because I'm down in Code Blue, still trying to figure out how we serve these people. I'll also add, you do not have one homeless person come up to this mic yet and tell you how bad Code Blue was. It's always been people from out of town that have not taken the time out to go to their city council, to their house of worship, or to their elected officials to say, hey, why isn't my town even doing what the City of New Brunswick doing? So at the end of the day, I, again, I am, I'm all ears, I love you all, because no matter what you say, I'm still gonna do the work and we're still gonna do the work at the end of the day. And I would gladly say after the meeting to talk to any and everybody about Code Blue.
At this time, uh, let it, go ahead, sir. Name my address.
Sure, my name is Felix, I am a resident.
You don't have the address, is your name, your, uh, your, your address?
I can discuss my address, my address is one oh one seven Donwood Court at New Brunswick, I am a New Brunswick resident. Um, I think that the discussion may have headed a specific direction, but one thing that was discussed in the most prior conversation was that this issue extends past New Brunswick, and that is, um, true. That the situation here is likely that New Brunswick is probably at the forefront of this. But that has more to do with other cities doing a pretty terrible job rather than New Brunswick doing, uh, like an amazing job, personally. Um, like, the arguments here about, I think, more than like quibbling about whether Keith Jones has done well or not, um, is more about, it fundamentally returns back to that number of like, we're arguing around ninety, ninety K going to, um, the Code Blue shelters, when, like, where is the rest of the budget going? Uh, like, we discussed earlier about twenty million going to the police, how effective has the police been go, doing? Could some of that money be used for homeless, just directly assisting homeless? That, I, like, a lot of the argument here is like, it's somewhat gone in a different direction and it would be preferable to look at that, like, that. How, how, how is the city doing in this? Does the city actually care? Like, maybe Code, um, Keith Jones cares, maybe he doesn't, maybe, um, they don't care, but there's like different definition or competence or confidence or whatever, it doesn't matter as much. The question is more like, what is the city doing to actually address homelessness? Because as I mentioned, this problem will get worse over years to years. Um, one, one million was, uh, I think that was what was discussed in the prior meeting about two weeks ago for affordable housing. But we're still talking like twenty million is going to, are the police actually addressing public safety concerns? Are they able to solve these issues? Would it be better to allocate some more of that to, um, affordable housing? Like, maybe putting some of that money into, uh, directly assisting the homeless make more? Or maybe trying to build more housing here because there is more food access, uh, better food access, rather than like Saraville, which might be more of a food desert? Why don't we look into some of these solutions? Um, more important than like, is the, is the speech by the members of the cloth earlier accurate or not in regards to failures by Keith Jones? It's more like, why is the city not considering any other solutions rather than arguing, we are technically following the letter of law in Code Blue? Could the city be doing better with, uh, where's allocating those funds? That is the most important question here, rather than, uh, interpersonal confidence.
We're going to ready to take a motion?
Council President.
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, real quick, Council President, I think the council would be interested to know that, uh, there was a comment regarding wellness checks and the policy is that managers do wellness checks, the police are not dispatched in wellness checks.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, and I, I still continue to say that the, um, MEA contract is being negotiated in good faith by, by both sides. So thank you.
So, mention, second.
Local?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwick?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Ethelmar?
Yes.
Thank you.